Good evening and welcome to the school committee September 24, 2020 meeting. This evening we will go right into executive session. It is 6:33 I am calling this meeting to order pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law Mass General Law Chapter 30a Paragraph 20 as well as the select board's emergency order dated March 16, 2020. The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT web page within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak. At this time a roll call attendance will be taken. Ms. Koshin?
Sorry, I forgot to mute. Present.
Ms. Naborsky?
Present.
Mr. Morton?
Present. Sorry, caught me sleeping.
I said present.
Okay.
I think my input's not up high enough.
Ms. Hanstead?
Present.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Here.
Mrs. Raffey, present. At this time I'll accept a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of strategy for collective bargaining with the Holliston Federation of Teachers for which we will return.
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Lisa.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Lisa. Roll call vote, Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. To the public who may be watching, we will return promptly at 7pm as we have invited speakers at 7. So for now we are moving into executive session.
And good evening, everybody. It is now seven thirteen. We are re joining you all from executive session. Keith, do I need to make a motion to go back into regular session here? No, okay, I'm good. Okay, so this evening we have some new faces on screen with us tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sam Tyler, who is the Chair of the Governance Committee. And he can introduce himself and his team, and we can go from there. So, Mr. Tyler?
Okay, well, maybe the way to start is because it's a virtual meeting, we have a statement that we have to make before we can even get started. Then we can introduce the members after that.
So I did that before we went into executive session. So I opened the meeting, then do you need to?
Well, we've had, we've had joint meetings before. We've had to.
Okay, so would you like to state it? Because I've already said it once.
Yeah, but that was for your committee. I get to do my committee.
Okay.
All right, so here goes. pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law's Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated three sixteen twenty twenty, the Governance Committee will be using remote participation this meeting, this portion of the meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted within twenty-four hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during the meeting. I would ask all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. So at this time, we just need to do a quick roll call of who's in attendance. I'll start with Mr. Engel.
President.
Mr. LeBeau.
President.
Just Lingam.
President.
Mr. McCutney.
President.
And Mr. Tyler, President. So we're all here. You, you all have or should have a sort of snapshot of each of the five members of the committee. And you've just, they've just announced themselves. I don't know if we need to do more since we're, we've got, we've got a member who's not going to be able to be with us long. So I want to get started when we can.
Yeah, absolutely. Nope, we all said hello, you know, before we jumped on air. So that's fine. But Sam, do you want to start and share a little bit about, can you just give a thirty-second high-level elevator pitch about Governance Committee for our audience? And then we can go into some questions.
Sure. Well, since we're talking to the school committee, I'll say from my experience in Boston, we're seriously considering an appointed school board for Alston. Just kidding. I think the, the Governance Committee was established by the Select Board for the purpose of reviewing the town bylaws regarding governance issues and making recommendations for improvement, modernizing sort of town government where there are now, you know, new state laws that provide additional features that are possible. I think the last time there was any real change was back in nineteen ninety-four, when there was a, a Governance Committee, or not a Governance, as a Government Study Committee. And all that committee did was, well, not in nineteen ninety-four, was to recommend the establishment of the point of the Town Administrator, which was Paul at the time, or when he, when it moved to Town Administrator, he was. What was your title before that, Paul?
Executive Secretary.
That's right, Executive Secretary. And before that, nineteen eighty-seven, there was another Government Study Committee, and the outcome of that was an appointed accountant and, I'm sorry, an elected accountant and elected treasurer were made appointments, made by the Town Administrator. So really, it's been over twenty-five years since there's been any real change and/or, you know, careful look at the bylaws. And so that's what we're doing. We have sort of a three-year tenure. We have been looking at bylaws of other towns, charters of other towns for the purpose of sort of gathering ideas for best practices. And in the course of that, we've found a number of towns, particularly those with charters, that have an article usually entitled financed and fiscal procedures or just financial procedures. But basically, it's a article that outlines the budget development process. Now, Alston bylaws are silent on the budget process, and I know that's created some tension. And now, you know, we've had a Town Administrator for five years who had one style, we've got a new Town Administrator. We basically were thinking that this would be a time to look at that issue and determine whether there ought to be changes in the bylaws dealing with the budget process. But before we really could think of suggestions, we really should understand the process as it operates now, and who's doing what, and what's the timing? And what, what ideas would people have for improvement? So we've met with the financial officers, the Town Accountant, Town Treasurer Collector, and the Principal Assessor. We've met with Finance Committee. We've met with the Select Board. We will meet with the Town Administrator, but right now, we're, before that, we wanted to sit down with the School Committee, since you obviously have the biggest budget, and maybe some unique situations that would be helpful to know in terms of, you know, the budget development process. So.
Great. And before I let you go any further, Sam, so the committee, and they introduced themselves, but two of the strong backbones of the HPS family are sitting on this call, and they didn't say hi. And that is Keith Boudet, who's our Business Manager. I think he might know all of you, and Dr. Susan Kuska, who is our new interim superintendent. So my apologies, I did not mean to leave you out of saying hello and introducing yourselves. But I need to acknowledge that they are here as well. And as I shared with you, Sam, this is our full school committee meeting. But we have three members who've been on the Budget Subcommittee at least for the last two years together. So Anne Louise and Andy and Lisa are the Budget Subcommittee. So they might, will be answering more of the questions, more so than the other members. And I just wanted to make that clear to people about what, you know, why they're answering the questions, et cetera, versus somebody else.
Okay, and you know, there, there may be other reasons that later on, we'll want to come back and talk about other issues. But right now, really, the focus is on the budget process. And so that's, and the questions that we are sharing have to do with that. Or I think we can consolidate a couple of those questions. And that was like, I think in the, in the start, the issue is, I was involved with that last three-board committee meeting. So in terms of budget guidelines, but.
What, what three-board meeting?
Oh, I thought there was, I was referring to the three-committee meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee.
When was that?
Oh, like February, January?
Yeah, it was months ago.
When we were actually allowed to be together before COVID hit.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, the, in our view of other towns, it usually starts with a individual or an office that, that is responsible for establishing the guidelines in terms of what kind of increase can you consider for the next, you know, fiscal year? What's the calendar of what, what happens when? And I didn't know whether, you know, I guess we didn't know whether there is such a, a, a process at the beginning of the whole budget season where the principal players get together and talk about the state of town finances and what you might expect and what everybody else would know. And then from which a, a budget calendar and a, and budget guidelines would emerge to help the department heads and boards and commissions bear their budget for the next year. So I guess the simple question is, is there such a meeting at the start of the budget process to help those who are preparing the budgets know what the guidelines are? And.
Joining you all from executive session. Keith, do I need to make a motion to go back into regular session here? No, okay, I'm good. Okay, so this evening we have some new faces on screen with us tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sam Tyler, who is the Chair of the Governance Committee. And he can introduce himself and his team. And we can go from there. So, Mr. Tyler?
Okay, well, maybe the way to start is because it's a virtual meeting, we have a statement that we have to make before we can even get started. Then we can introduce the members after that.
So I did that before we went into executive session. So I opened the meeting, then do you need to?
We've had, we've had joint meetings before, we've had to.
Okay. So would you like to state it? Because I've already said it once.
Yeah, but that was for your committee. I got to do my committee.
Okay.
All right, so here goes. pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated 3/16/2020. The Governance Committee will be using remote participation this meeting, this portion of the meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during the meeting. I would ask all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. So at this time, we just need to do a quick roll call of who's in attendance. And I'll start with Mr. Engel.
President.
Mr. LeBeau.
President.
Just Lingam.
President.
Mr. McCutney.
President.
And Mr. Tyler, President. So we're all here. You, you all have or should have a sort of snapshot of each of the five members of the committee. And you've just, they've just announced themselves. I don't know if we need to do more since we're, we've got, we've got a member who's not going to be able to be with us long. So I want to get started when we can.
Yeah, absolutely. No, we all said hello, you know, before we jumped on air, so that's fine. But Sam, do you want to start and share a little bit about? Can you just give a 30-second high-level elevator pitch about Governance Committee for our audience? And then we can go into some questions.
Sure, well, since we were talking to the School Committee, I'll say from my experience in Boston, we're seriously considering an appointed School Board for Alston. Just kidding. I think the, the Governance Committee was established by the Select Board for the purpose of reviewing the town bylaws regarding governance issues and making recommendations for improvement, modernizing sort of town government where there are now, you know, new state laws that provide additional features that are possible. I think the last time there was any real change was back in 1994, when there was a, a Governance Committee, or not a Governance, Government Study Committee. And all that committee did was, well, in 1994, was to recommend the establishment of the Town Administrator, which was Paul at the time, or when he, when it moved to Town Administrator, he was. What was your title before that, Paul?
Executive Secretary.
That's right, Executive Secretary. And before that, in 1987, there was another Government Study Committee. And the outcome of that was an appointed accountant and, I'm sorry, an elected accountant and elected treasurer were made appointments made by the Town Administrator. So really, it's been over 25 years since there's been any real change and/or, you know, careful look at the bylaws. And so that's what we're doing. We have sort of a three-year tenure. We have been looking at bylaws of other towns, charters of other towns for the purpose of sort of gathering ideas for best practices. And in the course of that, we've found a number of towns, particularly those with charters, that have an article usually entitled financed and fiscal procedures or just financial procedures. But basically, it's a article that outlines the budget development process. Now, Alston bylaws are silent on the budget process. And I know that's created some tension. And now, you know, we've had a Town Administrator for five years who had one style, we've got a new Town Administrator. We basically, we're thinking that this would be a time to look at that issue and determine whether there ought to be changes in the bylaws dealing with the budget process. But before we really could think of suggestions, we really should understand the process as it operates now and who's doing what and what's the timing and what, what ideas would people have for improvement? So we've met with the Financial Officers, the Town Accountant, Town Treasurer Collector, and the Principal Assessor. We've met with Finance Committee, we've met with the Select Board. We will meet with the Town Administrator. But right now, we're, before that, we wanted to sit down with the School Committee, since you obviously have the biggest budget and maybe some unique situations that would be helpful to know in terms of, you know, the budget development process, so.
Great. And before I let you go any further, Sam, so the committee, they introduced themselves, but two of the strong backbones of the HPS family are sitting on this call and they didn't say hi. And that is Keith Bude, who's our Business Manager. I think he might know all of you. And Dr. Susan Cuska, who is our new interim superintendent. So my apologies, I did not mean to leave you out of saying hello and introducing yourselves. But I need to acknowledge that they are here as well. And as I shared with you, Sam, this is our full School Committee meeting. But we have three members who've been on the Budget Subcommittee, at least for the last two years together. So Ann Louise and Andy and Lisa are the Budget Subcommittee. So they might, will be answering more of the questions, more so than the other members. And I just wanted to make that clear to people about what, you know, why they're answering the questions, et cetera, versus somebody else.
Okay, and you know, there, there may be other reasons that later on, we'll want to come back and talk about other issues. But right now, really, the focus is on the budget process and so that's, and the questions that we are sharing have to do with that. Or I think we can consolidate a couple of those questions. That was like, I think in the, in the start, the issue is, I was involved with that last three board committee meeting. So in terms of budget guidelines.
What, what three board meeting?
Oh, I thought there was, I was referring to the three committee meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee.
When was that?
Like February, January?
Yeah, it was months ago.
When we were actually allowed to be together before COVID hit.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, in our view of other towns, it usually starts with a individual or an office that, that is responsible for establishing the guidelines in terms of what kind of increase can you consider for the next, you know, fiscal year? What's the calendar of what, what happens when? And I didn't know whether, you know, I guess we didn't know whether there is such a, a, a process at the beginning of the whole budget season where the principal players get together and talk about the state of town finances and what you might expect and what everybody else would know. And then from which a budget calendar and, and budget guidelines would emerge to help the department heads and boards and commissions bear their budget for the next year. So I guess the simple question is, is there such a meeting at the start of the budget process to help those who are preparing the budgets know what the guidelines are?
So, hi, I'm Ann Louise Handstad. And maybe just by way of background, because we should have sent you blurbs on all of us, I suppose. I've been on the committee, I'm in my ninth year, and have been on the Budget Subcommittee since the beginning. And I'm currently Chair of it. So I can offer some history and context as well as we try to go through this. The beginning of the year, there is actually, so I, I don't want to speak for other committees, right? But we are in receipt of a memo that is typically published. I mean, it, it could be October, it could be November, by the, by the Finance Committee. And in that memo, it typically, it may not be October, it's usually after, I think, fall town meeting. But we're in receipt of a memo that has their guideline. And it's a, it's a budget guideline that is set as a guidepost for every department in town. And it's been developed after they have an opportunity to look at the detailed finances of the town, local revenue, you know, a number of different factors that they will examine. They do it in concert with the officials at Town Hall and the Town Administrator. So Paul, it's reaching back five years. I don't, I don't know, but I'm assuming you actively worked closely with the Finance Committee to get there. And then that's kind of what comes to us. Now, sometimes that guideline number doesn't, it, it isn't always issued at the same time. It may depend on when they're getting certain information from the state. So that's usually one guidepost that sets the standard for all departments in town. With respect to our process, we actually have a, it's probably one of the most consistent things about School Committee. Our process and timeline associated with developing the budget, and it's very public. For all intents and purposes, it begins in earnest in, in January. And the reason for that is that we are waiting on numbers from the state with respect to local aid. But it's also, that's about as long as we can possibly wait before we kind of lock down on an, on sort of an estimate of where we're going to be in our financial picture with respect to special education. Special education costs, as I'm sure several of you know, can vary significantly year to year. If even a single child has a particular challenge and we need to address that, and, and the cost can be meaningful. So, you know, we, we always need to account for that. And, and that, that is a critical figure that goes into our budget planning process. And if we were to try to estimate that in, say, September, October, it, it, it would be a useless number because it isn't until the middle of the year that we have a better picture on, you know, the, the population of students for whom that is a relevant concern. However, about five years ago, the town asked us, the Finance Committee, if we could in any way start the process sooner so that they would have more visibility and could do, could begin planning around the school budget because it is such a big portion of the town's budget. So we worked very closely with them to come up with a calendar where we would, in the fall, begin releasing estimates of our fixed costs, which, you know, are tend to be more, well, they're fixed, but they can fluctuate slightly, but they're fixed costs. And so we go through that in three review sessions in the fall. They begin mid-November, then there's a second one in, in mid-December, and then early January. The first one is all expenses that are not attached to salaries or special education. Because those are the things that year over year are fairly consistent. So we will sort of lock down on an estimate of those. And then by December 12th, 15th-ish, depending on when Thursday falls, we will be able to put together an estimate. And by the way, these come from the administration, from Keith and, and the superintendent, on where we stand with respect to overall salary costs. As you know, these are contractuals, so there isn't a lot of room for variation. But there can be some changes in staff that, you know, we're able to estimate roughly by this time of year. And then finally, early January is when we put a number against the special ed costs that we anticipate. What this is, it's, it's a, it's our sort of level, it's our foundation, it's our level service budget. And it gives us a benchmark from which to work to continue the budget planning process. So it's the baseline, it's our level service, it's what's going to cost to turn the lights on and keep the programs we have, the staff we have, et cetera, et cetera. But that doesn't always mean it's the same cost as the prior year. In fact, it almost never is. Out of the gate, that level service budget, I can tell you historically is at or sometimes above the guideline, depending on where the guideline is. So that's just, just a point in fact. But from there, the administration begins working more bottoms-up at assessing the full needs of the district. And that process, it's very time-consuming. It involves from teachers to administrators at the building level, from that up to the superintendent, information that helps us understand what the needs and priorities of the schools are. And then they present that to the schools typically in late January. And it's sort of an official kickoff, if you will, to the budget planning process for the spring for us. It's always publicized, we always reach out and make a concerted effort to invite the Select Board members, as well as the Finance Committee members, so that everybody is in the know and understands what's being put on the table and what the schools' needs are. And these are sometimes a new program that's being put in place. For instance, we had one that was put in the docket several years ago, and we're working hard to keep it in place to help us assess the, the, the mental health of our students. Someone help me out here, what's it called?
Mood Check, the Mood Check program.
Called Mood Check, but you know, like, something like that could come up that's new. Other things are things that are resurrected from budget cuts in the past. Things that might have been eliminated that we worked very hard over the last nine years, frankly, to try to bring back into the district, whether it's an additional psychologist or what have you. So that meeting typically occurs late January. This past year, it was January 24th. So I'd like you to think of that as one bookend in the process because that is, we can't move that forward. We can't move it forward because it requires extraordinary effort on the part of the administration. They need to be engaged in the school year to see what's going on, to know what those needs look like. And we don't want to do it till we have a better understanding of our special educator needs. So that, that, that bookend won't move. And typically, we do have participation from one or two Select Board members. The Town Administrator tries to come or has in the past. And the Finance Committee usually is able to send along a few members. So, so that's very helpful. From there, I'll sort of accelerate through the process and we have a chart. Actually, maybe you could just pull that chart up, Keith, if you have it, or I can show the screen just for a moment. I just want to show something to the group here.
The Budget Book online?
No, just the, this lovely calendar.
Yes, our lovely calendar. The Budget Book.
You don't even have to pull it up. If you can see this, can you see this? You don't, you don't need to read the detail. I, I will have them queue it up. But that, that calendar gets publicized at a public level on our website, et cetera, in November, when we lock down on the dates so that everybody is well aware. Once we know what our guidelines are, et cetera, we, we have a very public calendar. Anybody can participate in every time we present, we bring this thing back up to remind people when the next meeting is, when the next milestone is. From, from the point of that strategic initiatives meeting, we then let the superintendent kind of go into hiding for a week. Usually, they don't get a lot of time because what they're facing is something like 50 different strategic priorities coming up from the buildings that the superintendent and Central Office Administration need to evaluate to quite frankly, figure out what can we afford, what's reasonable, what should we be aiming for? And the superintendent's lens, I'm going to speak for a moment, Dr. Cuska, based on past history, really is driven by priorities and needs. The affordability piece comes in a little bit later. And that's, that's come at our directive because we want to know as a committee, what, what is essential? What is it going to take to do right by our children? And that, that list can change year over year, sometimes it's very consistent. Typically, things will be on that list three, four, five years in a row before we can actually try to address it. And you listen to the pleas of the principals, et cetera. So we put those on. We let, we let the superintendent come back to us and he'll usually call the list down to the things that he thinks are most essential. He might get from 50 down to 10. And he'll come back with a budget that, you know, in full transparency, is almost inevitably something we are going to have to trim. Because we are always conscious of the town guideline and trying to do our best to manage to that while at the same time acknowledging that student needs are there and we need to care for this population. So we spend the next several weeks working as a Budget Subcommittee and as a committee, trying to refine what the superintendent has presented to us. That, that process alone can take two to three weeks, as you can imagine. So we don't see what the superintendent is going to present until early February. Last year was February 6th. So it, it can take the better part of February for the committee itself to kind of hash out where we're going to go with this budget. And then in early March, we present to the Finance Committee, the mid-March. The date for that meeting is something that, as Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, I'll usually sit down with the liaisons from the Finance Committee and try to work through this calendar. It gets picked long in advance, so it's not like that's a surprise date. We will try to calendar that weeks in advance, but it all, it always occurs roughly around that mid-March timeline. And frankly, they try to accommodate us because other departments do not have the information dependencies that we do, where we're looking for state information, et cetera. So they'll try to go through other departments, hear them, and then often get to us. They may have some other departments after us. But we will go through the process then. And when we present to the Finance Committee, there's always an invitation to the Town Administrator. And typically, the Town Administrator is present at those meetings. And often, there's a Select Board member or two who attend those meetings as well because obviously they're public meetings. And it's very much the, but then we're presenting a voted budget. Now, there have been instances where we've kind of worked around where sometimes we have to adjust or we will revote a budget after we present to the Finance Committee. So there's some back and forth. We work closely with the Finance Committee liaisons to try to understand where the town is at, what the town priorities are, where the budget, where the budget guidelines, you know, are going to cause, cause a challenge for us or not. And, and you know, then, then it's just a back and forth process over the next several weeks. We try to come to agreements before town meeting so that when we walk into town meeting, there's a common understanding of what the schools are asking for. And ideally, a positive recommendation coming from the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator to support that request. I have to say, over the last nine years, we haven't been in a situation where we've gone to town meeting without that common understanding. There have been moments where it came within the hour before because we were still working through some details and trying to sort out, you know, can we do this, can we do that? But it's a healthy collegial process, it's flexible, it's agile. And I think it's, it's actually working well. This year, just as evidence of that, I'm sure you can imagine that the pandemic really threw the school district into a high state of concern. And we acted quickly, to the credit of the administration and our Finance Committee liaisons and Tina Hind from the Select Board. I pulled together weekly Subcommittee, Budget Subcommittee liaison meetings, where weekly, we began hashing through what the schools might need to help get through the spring. And then that continued in, well, into the summer. So I don't think we would have been able to have done that and moved so quickly if we didn't have a good understanding of process and how it works and, and transparent sharing of information, if you will. I, I think the other key thing on this is that we, we have a, this isn't just something the School Committee does in a vacuum. Other than being televised, we always host a, a public hearing. So as we come to the conclusion of our budget process, it's our goal that, it's our hope that all along, the public has been watching. But we want to give them an opportunity to weigh in. And of course, believe me, they weigh in all along if there's an issue or a concern. But then we host a public hearing and that usually occurs early April. This past year, it was supposed to be on April 2nd. That did not happen because the world got thrown into a tizzy on Thursday, March 12th. But the public hearing is designed to let the public raise questions, concerns, just try to understand what we're putting forward before town meeting, if you will.
Isn't that, that's a state requirement, isn't it?
It is, it is a state requirement, but it's, but I think it's, even if it weren't, it's the kind of thing we would do because it's just the right thing to do.
We also hold office hours, right, Ann Louise?
Yes, that's, that's a really great point, Cynthia. So we will hold, especially during budget season, office hours. We try to hold them at night for people who are working or Saturday mornings, typically, you know, coffee haven, what have you. It's interesting, those are not, those are somewhat well-attended as you get close to budget season. The public hearing is not. Put it right there, sweetie, thank you so much. Sorry, I'm getting dinner to over. I think, you know, it'll be interesting to see how virtual participation might change all this for the moment because we've gotten way more public participation through Zoom than we ever got in a physical Zoom, in a physical town hearing, a public hearing. So, you know, and then we go to town meeting and, you know, we're always hopeful and optimistic that town meeting, which is the body that has the authority to approve our budget, that they will do so. You know, there's, I, I, I want you to know, like, the schools are well aware that we're not only the biggest budget in town, but that we ask for a lot. And we're very conscious of trying to manage that efficiently and prudently. And I'm sharing that because it's not as if we go into the budget process assuming we're going to get, you know, whatever we ask for. And we don't. And that's, that's an important message because it would be so easy to look at the school budgets and say, oh my God, you know, here's what, here's what they're walking away with. But I think it's the process that ensures we're able to fund the most essential things in most years. You had some other questions here, and I do think.
Let me, let me, you've raised some issues, so let me ask a few questions.
Yeah.
You've been there in that position for nine years. And you mentioned that you get the guidelines from the Finance Committee. Has that been all through that time?
I believe so. I mean, you're stretching my memory banks. I have to go look back nine years. In the recent past, I'm going to say at least the last five years, we get a solid guideline. And I, I'm, you know, I, I want to, I'm willing to bet my salary it was prior to that. So, yes. And it, you know, I think it's, that was a, it's a thoughtful, conservative guideline. And it, you know, I think it's, that was a, it's a thoughtful conservative guideline, always. I will say that.
And do you receive anything along that line from the town administrator?
Well, I believe that guideline, depending on who's in the town administrator role, has been part of the process in, in developing that guideline, at a, you know, a seat at the table. So, and I would not want to get a separate memo from a town administrator and from the finance committee. And God forbid they not align, right? You know, I'd like to think that they're coming from one.
But you can make the argument that it should come from the town administrator as opposed to the finance committee, although it has been the finance committee. And when you submit your budget for the first sort of town review, you submit it to the finance committee, but not the town administrator?
That word submit is throwing me a little bit.
Well, give me somebody to look at.
Well, well, we know, we don't just hand it off. And, and the reason I'm saying that is because we present to the finance committee. We present what we're asking for, there's a due diligence process there. They make inquiries about specific items, the whys and the wherefores, to the point where sometimes school committee takes umbrage because, you know, we, we have statutory authority to spend the money the way we need, but we want to be able to explain what we're asking for and why.
Well, and you, you get to spend the appropriation.
That's right. So, right, so we have to, you know, but so we have to be able to explain what we're asking for, right? So we go through that process. So it's a, you know, we present to the finance committee. I can't remember a year when the town administrator wasn't at the table. And as I said, often the select board, always the select board members are typically in the room. So there's a couple usually who show up. So it's, you know, it's been, as I said, a, I think a fairly well organized transparent process. And if I may, resulted in a very healthy fiscal situation where we have not in 10 years had to go to the town for an override. We've been able to manage our budgets cleanly and efficiently with the support of the town for 10 years, which is a commitment I made after the last override. But so I think it works if that matters at all.
How much, how much of the operating budget is in excess of your net school spending? So does that, does a factor at all in terms of, you know, the, the percentage that you're allowed? That doesn't, you're still above, I'm assuming, net school spending?
Yeah, I want to give you some-
Wait, can I ask a question? Can you clarify, Sam, what you mean by net school spending? Because that's not a term that we usually have had in, in conversations in my tenure here. So could you explain what you mean by that?
All right, you explain the term net school spending and then we do have an answer to that because we, we do have a-
I, I think net school spending is the amount determined by the state as the local share of the school budget to ensure that there's an adequate education provided to all students in Holliston that go to the Boston Public, I mean, the Boston, yeah, Holliston Public Schools. So there's, it's, the state determines what the full amount is. And then based on information that it has regarding wealth, personal income and property wealth, basically determines what the town is able to pay on its own. The difference it makes up in, in state aid. But it's really the minimum amount that, it's like foundation budget level. It's like the minimum amount that you can spend on education. But often towns are spending more than that. So staying within the guidelines is not a factor of coming below the net school spending number for the most part.
Yeah, well, I think he's-
Well, I've, I've worked with some towns where they just budget at the net school number, which is particularly for high need-
Sam, there's six towns, there's six towns in the state right now that are at or below net school spending, okay? 1.8% of the population, Sam. Net school spending is not a, a significant number here.
Okay, so let, let me try to back up. I think you said this right. It's the minimum, it's what the state requires. It's so low that only six, only six districts in the Commonwealth have adhered to it. And arguably, it's because they're in a socioeconomic situation where they can't go above it. And if you look at the six districts, you know, my heart goes out to them. They're inner-city challenged, low-income districts, okay? So when you look at this, Holliston is, we don't disregard it. We're 158 out of 322 districts. So we're hardly the top district in the state if you consider that ratio, okay? And when you start to look at it a little bit further, you, the NSS is not, it's not funding to provide services that the community, it's not enough to provide what this community needs based on our subject matter experts, who are the educators and here's what we need to run the district. And it's definitely not in line with what the community demands. If we were to adhere to the net school spending ratio in 2018, we would have had to have cut $8.4 million out of the budget. If we were to have adhered to it last year, we would have cut $9 million out of the budget.
Well, yeah, but let me interrupt. Don't, don't misinterpret my question. It's not suggesting that Holliston should be closer to net school spending. It was more a question about net school spending is so low and the budget is actually high enough above that, that it's not a factor in the budget guidelines. No matter what percent the increase is, you're still-
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't look at it because it's so low. And I guess I would say apparently neither does virtually every other district in the state. I mean, it's almost, it's an irrelevant figure. No one looks at it because it's just out of sync with, the term adequate is, is completely misapplied to, to net school spending.
Yep. Well, we, we have some other questions and I assume we were running out of time, so let me move on. You know, the, the, as I mentioned earlier, the Holliston bylaws are, are silent on the budget development process. So do you think it would be helpful or not to have a budget development guideline that outlines the various steps in the, in the budget development process? So that everybody is on the same page. I mean, particularly if there's not, you know, or it's kind of meeting at the beginning to hash this out together.
I, let me just respond and then feel free, Susan. This is, this is maybe a philosophical question because it goes to whether or not you believe you have to articulate every single thing in a bylaw or not. But if I, if I were to step back, I would tell you the process is working well. It's highly transparent. It's codified and published at the beginning of the year. So everybody is on the same page with respect to process. Everybody knows when we will be presenting specific information. Everybody is invited to the table on that. There's no point in the process where anybody can't get access to that information. Where we are very clear in our rationale for what we're asking for when. So, so it's not as if I think the process is misunderstood, if you will. But I, I would go a step farther. The second you try to delineate more deadlines, milestones, et cetera, in a codified calendar in a bylaw, is the second you lose the ability to be flexible and agile. And I would argue that if that had been the case, we would have been in a tough spot at the start of the pandemic. We needed to be able to move quickly, make decisions quickly and work collaboratively with our peers on the finance committee and the select board. And I think currently, the town administrator, because of the 1994 law, does actually have a clear role. So I, I wouldn't say that the town is, is silent on the topic of budget. And I don't think that the process is misunderstood by anybody. So I think the school committee is comfortable that the process as it is established works pretty well. And I guess our finances would suggest that because we haven't needed to come back to the town for money on an exceptional basis.
So would you then say there's no changes that you think need to be implemented regarding improving the budget process?
Not the operating budget process, I think it's pretty clean.
I would argue and add and say that we need a strategic plan so that when all the different departments are planning their budgets, they have a guiding principle to follow. Right now, my issue with the budget process is I feel like all the departments are sort of planning in their own silos.
Well, respectfully, we do have a strategic, strategic plan for our operating budget, so-
No, we, school committee do.
Wait, let me finish. What you're asking for, I wholeheartedly agree. The town needs a strategic plan and a vision that establishes priorities and criteria that ultimately weigh into capital investments that the town needs to make. That's separate and apart from the operating budget. And the operating budget is guided by our strategic plan and priorities. And these two things really are distinct and different. That's why when you asked me, do we need to make any changes? I said, no, certainly not to the operating budget. Now, the capital budgeting process, there is a capital budgeting committee right now. Keith and I have a sort of a non-meaningful vote in that. But there was a process launched, you know, a collaborative one several years ago with outside consultants from the Collins Group that, where we began building a model to help establish those criteria and weighting factors that would then help us evaluate as a town, the capital investments across the board that everybody needed to be thinking about. So that whether it was the roof falling in on the library or a new fire truck, it wouldn't come up as a surprise. It was intended to give visibility to every, for every department in the town, in the town, so that it could all be considered together. And we worked very carefully with the finance committee and the select board at the time to begin codifying this model. It got to a certain point and then it became clear, quite honestly, that the departments that didn't have the benefit of a Keith Boudet as their business manager, they just didn't have the robust budget detail behind the scenes to be able to get to what the real capital needs were, et cetera. So an effort was put under, underway to get that shored up. And, and I'm confident that Mr. Ahern will be able to take that to the next level. But I think that model still needs to sit underneath, as Stacy said, a strategic plan that reflects the desires of the town, the vision of the town that says, this is who we want to be when we grow up and we want to make sure we put, you know, X million in place for, for, for this. Whether it's a new library or it's, you know, new roads or a water system, et cetera. When you're competing for money, not as a department, but as a town, you're trying to figure out how do you, how do you prioritize multimillion-dollar projects? That's where a well-structured capital model, capital asset management plan comes into play. But it has to sit underneath a strategic vision.
But in terms of the school committee and, and the administration in an annual capital budget process, any suggestions for change there?
Well, I mean, I think today we have a seat at the table on that capital planning committee, but I think of all-
But you don't vote.
What?
You don't vote though, right?
It's a, it's not really a meaningful vote, right? It's a, we're non-voting members, you know, I do, our opinions matter, I'd like to think, but no, we don't have a vote. And that, I do think that would be nice because the schools have a lot at stake, right? The, you know, dealing with one building, one field, whatever it is, a septic system, some of the projects can get expensive. So it would be helpful, yes, I think it would be nice if the district had a vote.
Well, let me, then let me follow up with the last question on this page. Should Holliston establish a capital planning committee to assist in the, in preparing the capital budget?
Well, there is one right now.
Well, it's a subcommittee of the finance committee.
Oh, yeah.
Broader, full represented body, equal votes.
I-
As an advisory committee to the town administrator.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't object to that, I think that might be helpful. But I, it could, I, I think it could operate either way as long as you had the right representation at the table. I think the key thing there is to get the voices at the table that represent the key stakeholders in town, the key departments. That's, that would be, that would be the only concern I would have, right? Making sure that's there. But I'd like to see a visioning committee established to help guide the capital planning committee. Because in a vacuum, I'm not sure how they vote to make priorities either.
Susan had a, Susan wanted to jump in, Sam, I, I'm going to give us a little wee, leeway. I'm going to give us a couple of minutes after eight, just because I want people to be able to ask questions from your team and I want my team to be able to, if they had any questions or whatnot. But Dr. Cuska went to say something and I jumped in front of her, so my apologies for that.
No, I was just going to say, my experiences have been a little bit different, having been in a larger district and then in a similar-sized district. So I've worked with the town administrator and select boards in Hanover. But then I was very heavily involved in the budget process in Waymouth, which had a mayor and town council. So we typically met as a central admin team with each of our departments. To be honest with you, we started pretty much in October, which I don't recommend this year because we still have so much more to deal with for the opening of schools. But typically, as a central office team, I would like to start the process internally and start putting together all the needs by school tied to their school improvement plans, which is tied to the district improvement plan. And then we would put those needs together and start meeting with the school committee to kind of go through each department and have that conversation. Because at the central office level, we do have to kind of streamline. If we have four buildings with competing needs, we then have to think of what the priorities are for the district and, and narrow those down and start prioritizing them before we even present to school committee. So that process, I feel, should start, you know, even long before that January deadline and it probably has here in the past.
Because, Susan, I don't mean to, it actually does. I didn't, I intentionally didn't go into our internal process. But it actually does begin in the fall. But that's why I was saying it couldn't be, the presentation of that work can't be done earlier than January because it's time-consuming. And I know that Brad and Keith were working carefully, well, and Dan actually more recently, with, you know, the building administrators and the teachers. It all did begin in the fall and then it kind of bubbles up into that culminating presentation in January. So you're absolutely right and that's a big part of, of the process.
And, and it is a unique type of budget because we're dealing with these unforeseen costs. As, as Annalise mentioned, sometimes you can have a student move in unexpectedly mid-year with $100,000 residential placement, for example, that wasn't part of our budget. So then we have to kind of go back to the drawing board and try to figure out our priorities from there. So there are a lot of challenges and it's, it is unique compared to municipal budgets. And, you know, I, I hope we can get to the point of being able to, I, I mean, it seems like the process that is being used in Holliston is similar to what I'm used to in my other districts and it does seem to work pretty efficiently.
Yeah, I think one thing that we've noticed in our review of town bylaws or charters is that in terms of the school budget, generally it's a, there's a comment about that the budget is submitted to usually the town administrator, manager in time to understand the full impact on, on the whole town budget. So it's at a certain date, but it clearly needs to be in, at a certain, at enough time to understand its total impact. And-
So we, so just by way of background, I talked through this with John Cronin in detail last year to help him understand the- I talked through this with John Cronin in detail last year to help him understand the budget calendar in a little bit more detail. Even though I feel like we keep putting it up and putting it up and no one looks at it, but. And I tried to explain the bookends to him and who's present when and who's invited when. And again, I just want to reiterate that the very first time we present to the public and then when we present to the finance committee, from our vantage point, that's the sharing of the information. It's documented, it's detailed and it's clear. So if it's as simple as sending an email, I told him, you know, sure, we'll, we'll shoot the PowerPoint over to the town administrator if he or she's not present and there's, yeah, I mean, we're, we're perfectly comfortable doing that. I would be reluctant to set a date in a bylaw because the date could shift. And, you know, we could, we, we've been in situations where we'll vote the budget and then as Susan points out, something comes up, a nine C cut mid-year, what have you, I don't know, but we might have to make a change. And so I think, I think we've been able to work together very clear, clearly to share information in a very transparent way and everybody at the table has access to it.
Well, I don't know if there's any other members of our committee that would like to ask questions? Paul, if I could, as you folks described the process from your perspective, you receive a guideline memo typically from the finance committee, sounds like sometime late December, early January. Does, do you folks have an interest or a need or a concern about being part of the process that leads to the guideline? Do, I mean, do you want to be in the room where the guideline is developed and the, and the revenue projections are reviewed and, and all the changes are discussed before the guideline is, is developed?
That's, let me try to address that from the vantage point of all the work that we're doing.
I'm, I'm just trying to find.
I mean, Paul, it, in, at one level, that's really asking is, you know, is that the guideline is almost never going, if we had the ability to set the guideline, it might be 5%. Be close to what we need every year. So you probably don't want us at that table. But I, I think that the real challenge is, it's, you know, is, is potentially how many voices do you need at the table to do that? I, I feel like that is within the statutory guidelines and purview for the finance committee. And as long as the town administrator is at the table with them as that guideline is being set, they're elected officials, we have to trust that they are arriving at a guideline that makes sense for the town. And I think what's really important here is that they are an objective body. They're not, they don't have departments reporting into them. And I think that that objectivity removes any conflict of interest in terms of how a guideline might be set. So I'm trying to imagine what that would look like if we or any other department were sitting at the table. It's a little bit different than the capital process where I was suggesting that we need criteria that help objectively set the strategic priorities from a capital standpoint. Those have to tie into a capital plan. The guideline for annual operating budget setting is, is determined by some very, very basic facts. Local revenue, what do we have in, you know, what are we gonna need to do to, you know, meet our bond rating and what are, what's the town investing in OPEB and what's the town investing in half a dozen other things? And, you know, is there an exceptional need in one department or another to add staff? Is there another police officer or another? You know, do, do they need to do something at town halls? So those, I, I gotta believe are considerations that go into play. But the guideline, I think, is set based on some fairly objective information coming from the town and the state. So I don't know that us sitting at the table helps that. I think it should be an objective process.
Well, I mean, you are the big dog.
Big dog.
So, you know, you not being there means they don't understand perhaps as well as they should, what your demands are coming up. So it's not just on the revenue side, it's also.
Well, we do, we do meet with them. I, I mean, we meet with them as liaisons and I stay in touch as chair in a couple of years. While I was on the committee, Joan Shaughnessy was chair and she was in communication with the FinCon Chair, where we're trying to get a sense of the direction they're heading in. I mean, there's an open dialogue. Look, would I turn down a seat at the table? Absolutely not. Do I think it's necessary and that it creates an improvement in the process? I don't know. I mean, the guy, look, the guideline has been consistently one and a half, 2% for the last how many years? And we've never submitted a one and a half or 2% budget because quite frankly, we can't even get there with the level service budget. So they kind of know where we stand. And it's gonna be above that. It just is. So for as long as that guideline sits below 2%, it's gonna be difficult for the schools to meet it and you know, that, that, that is something they know where we're coming from and. Yeah.
Right. Any other questions?
Any questions from the committee? Anyone? We have a couple of newer members, anyone? No?
Like you got a budget 101. Now you're running through the hills.
Sam, if we didn't answer your questions or you have other questions that, you know, come up as you move forward through this process, you know where to reach us and we're happy to meet with you again. And I, I'm glad that we have this opportunity just to be all, you know, to have all of us together as the full committee. I think that was informative.
I have one.
Very helpful for us as well. So it's, this is, this has been, we've got one more meeting, I think, with the town administrator and then we'll be done that series of questions or meetings. We are reaching out to town administrators, town managers and other about their process to learn as much as we can and other ideas that might be part of any kind of a change for reform, but we'll, we'll stay in touch because you're, you hired the biggest department, so kind of make sure that whatever we recommend is in sync with you or let you know ahead of time what's going on, but still have a ways to go before we'll be at that point.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Have a great night. You're, you're, you're welcome to stay on if you want, but we're gonna move on to reopening school business. But thank you so much. It was nice to meet some of you.
Thank you. And we just, we, we have a, a different lane to keep us going with our meeting as well, so. But again, thanks. We'll stay in touch.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Just reiterate, if you want to reach out, I'm happy to sit down and go through some of the other parts of this in more detail if you want.
Okay.
I'll send you a copy of that calendar and some past presentations, some older ones actually where we just laid that process out like big graphics for everyone. We don't even do that anymore because it seems to be well understood, but we'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, bye.
So while they transitioned back to their meeting, I want to welcome Mr. Scott Moles, who is our Board of Health Director and Fire Chief Mike Cassidy to join. They're here tonight to be part of the school reopening update that Dr. Cusco and Mr. Boudet are going to go through. My apologies for the delay. We came out of executive session a little late and so I was trying to give the governance committee their due full hour. So my apologies for the delay. It's nice to see you and just, I'm gonna have the committee just say hi because I'm not sure everybody knows who everyone is. So I'm Stacy Rafi, welcome. Lisa?
Lisa Koshen, welcome.
Andy?
Hi, I'm Andy Morton. Nice to meet you guys or see you guys. I've, we've met before.
Catherine?
Hi, I'm Catherine Zavard. Nice to see you, meet you.
Sin?
Hi, Cynthia Stavodick. Nice to see you both. Thank you for being here.
Dawn?
Good evening, Dawn Norski. Thank you for joining.
And Louise? Oh, you're on mute, and Louise?
Hi, Scott and Louise Hansdahl. Sorry. Thank you for joining and thank you for all you're doing. Tough job right now.
So Susan, I'm gonna turn it over to you and we're gonna talk about re, the reopening update, but I would just like to start by saying publicly, thank you to the teachers, the staff, the administrators, all of the safety, fire and, and police who have helped with all the planning. It is so good to see my kids go to, I can only talk about my own kids personally. It is so good to see them go back to normal. This has been a, a good week, so thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. It's, it has been very exciting to see the children. I'll talk a little bit more about our experiences the last few days, getting our pre-K to eight students back. And then I'll talk about next week for our nine to 12 students. But I wanted to start tonight and I met with, Keith and I met with Scott and Mike Chief Cassidy today because obviously we had a late change in the metrics last night and that raised a lot of concerns. And Chief Cassidy and I were able to get a message out to parents last night explaining why we went so quickly from gray to red. But it is very confusing and there is new guidance from DESI explaining that the metrics are not the only factor that we should be considering because these are unique situations. And I will start just by saying very positively, we have not had, as of this moment, knock on wood, we have not had cases, positive cases of COVID in the schools at this time since school has opened. So that is a great thing. Hopefully that will not change and hopefully we can keep staying safe over the next weeks. But because of this change in the metrics, I asked them to come and give a public update of just about why the, we went from that unshaded straight to red and I think they can speak to it much more eloquently than I can. But there is definitely some new guidance from DESI that I'll be adding, if not already, on the website that has some FAQs related to this as well. So I don't know, Mike, Chief Cassidy, would you like to start?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Cusco. And with the indulgence of the chair to allow me to speak. So the update that comes from the Department of Public Health on Wednesday evenings, normally they publish at 6:00 PM. Yesterday, they were somewhat delayed, it didn't come out until 7:30 PM. Those color designations of red, yellow, green or gray, which correspond to a higher risk, moderate, low or negligible risk, are based on 14 days worth of case data for the period ending this Saturday preceding the Wednesday. So what was published yesterday evening was for the 14-day period ending September 19th. And because we had a cluster at a long-term care facility that was reported last Wednesday, along with two cases at a single-family home that were reported last Wednesday and Friday, we were anticipating that we were going to be changing our risk designation this week. We were very happy last week when we went back to gray, but we were anticipating that it was going to, to change for the worse. We were caught a little off guard when it came out red. We were anticipating yellow based on previous calculations, but there was no need to panic and I think we responded appropriately. We got our messaging out. We had consistent messaging and because all 11 of our active cases in town right now are associated with two addresses in town with no linkage to the school population, I was very comfortable recommending that we continue to stay the course. Obviously, that's the decision of the committee and I know from the DESI guidance that that would be in consultation with DESI if you were to, to be changing your model. But I'm very comfortable based on where our cases are and the lack of linkage to the, the school population that we would continue with going forward and continuing to implement the, the model.
Yes, and it does say in the guidance that we would be meeting the Board of Health, myself and Chief Cassidy would meet to discuss what the ramification might be to the school system. And if we were to change, then I would have to consult with DESI related to that. Obviously, I would be consulting with school committee as well.
Dawn?
Thank you. I had a quick question on this. I have been taking a look at the Town of Holliston COVID-19 updates. And I know that at least as of July 19, or July 13th, it said that it would, will be posted weekly on Mondays and when the numbers change during the ensuing week. So I was, I was wondering why there wasn't an update this Monday? Because for the past six or seven Mondays, it typically has been updated. So I just wanted to confirm with you that as of this Monday, September 21st, the numbers hadn't changed and just for whatever reason it wasn't updating. And, and maybe that's a change and it's going to be or instead of and, but for the last six Mondays, it did in fact update.
So you are correct. That was an oversight on my part. I had a, a couple of other things on my to-do list on Monday and yeah, the, the number that you see there, which was posted on September 18th, was still and is still the number as of not only September 21st, but even today, September 24th. But thank you, thank you for catching that. I, I wasn't aware that I had neglected to do that. I can, I can make that post tonight.
Thank you. I just, I was just trying to clarify that the system wasn't changing, so I really appreciate it.
Definitely human error and oversight on my part.
Scott, did you want to add anything?
Chief Cassidy does, did an excellent job of updating it. I don't know what happened technology-wise for getting kicked out. But one of the things with us going to red and anticipate staying red, yes, we are sports from other communities are gonna be impacted. So I don't know what we have for some of the sporting events that DESI has the, the policy or some of the athletic departments have the policy of not going to red communities. Again, when you look at us as a red community, the reason we aren't, again, went to the red committee because we had the grouping that we have that's not within the school population or, or the public health grouping. As Chief said, so I, you know, we anticipate being, you know, possibly red next week, but I don't know what we have for sport events that where we need to notify other communities that we are red. Well, they of course look at the same chart, but be aware of that.
Great.
Had an additional question. I, I know Holliston is in this like gray area because we're so small, like I think maybe approximately, or just under 15,000 residents. What is the number? What makes us pivot from green to yellow and what makes us pivot from yellow to red? Do we have a clear understanding now in terms of actual numbers of active cases?
It's, it's the average cases per hundred thousand when the, when the state calculates it. And they do not take out a grouping as in a grouping that's within a, or a nursing home or a, or a group home. They count the number as a total number, even though that population does not go out to the public.
So what does that number mean for Holliston? Like for us, it clearly pivoted.
It's skewed, it, it skews it on the higher side. So in other words, it leans the number more towards the red side or, 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 you know, again, they would rather have the number as you average out from the, the date of the three weeks because they're using data based on last Friday's results for, and a three-week average. They use a three-week average because that takes into account the grouping that may come, be put on quarantine and come off quarantine because you would see it bounce. If we use the seven-day average, you would see communities bounce to the red, then bounce to the gray and then bounce back up to the, you know, possibly bounce back to the red as a result of the way the math works on the smaller communities. So that, that's why they went, the state used a, a three-week average.
Yeah, and I think. Yeah, and I think this is really why DESI updated those guidelines very recently because when we were only relying on just the colors and the metrics, which was the guidance over the summer and earlier, that was a very simplistic black and white kind of system. And people were panicking when they saw the red as we all do. However, when we get that additional information, it does allow some discretion to really sort, we we know that it's an isolated population. And that's why the guidance has changed on that. I will say Scott had spoken with Matt Baker, our athletic director this morning, and I reached out to him as well because we wanted to talk that piece through as far as athletics. And Matt did reach out to MIAA. And something similar happened at King Philip in Rantham. They had a spike very similarly in a very small pocket in an isolated population and also went red for a brief time period. And the MIA does allow the superintendent to work with the Board of Health to determine whether we would continue sports based on our status at the time. So certainly if this is a continuous situation, we would, we would really need to rethink this. But if it's a short-term situation, we have some discretion there. And obviously, if Scott and I meet and determine that we think that would be in the best interest to move in a different direction, certainly I would meet with school committee before making that decision as well.
So then where, where do we stand now? Is everything frozen until you do meet and collaborate and then come back and meet with school committee again? Because it was my understanding there may even be tryouts and practices starting as early as this weekend. So are things frozen until those meetings occur? Or if schools open, we're proceeding with this until we pull it back? What's, I'm, what's the status?
Right now, the, the schools can continue to practice. They have, they don't have any real events other than the golf event on Friday. Most of them are still in the, in the practice mode scenario. So most of the major sporting events are, are going to be happening until after the October holiday anyways.
Yeah, so obviously we're hoping that we can move quickly out of the red and then we won't have to have this conversation if we end up staying in red for typically it's that three-week look back, right Scott, that we would be considering a significant time period, right?
Correct.
Scott, has there been communication? Go ahead, Dawn. No, go ahead, Dawn. I'll ask afterwards.
Scott, is there any reporting lag? Like where, where we saw those nine new cases appear from the last week, or I think maybe around September 16th, are those positive cases from the day before? Or are they cases that have trickled in over three or four days? Do we do, is there any transparency on when you receive, when the tests were taken?
We, we got those last, last week. They reported to the, that the group was on the, on the Friday. And we were anticipating, you know, based on the state's calculations, that that would be at least the yellow, but not necessarily the red because they had not yet determined on whether or not, again, taking a group home as a population cluster really was a general public health number. And, and they were still as of Wednesday of this week, talking that it would skew the number when you include it as a general population. So even if it, you know, you had nine people in, in a prison and they all had Holliston addresses, they're not going to be out in the public. So why should you make it up the public, you know, a part of the public average that they're, that they're using, but they would rather keep it skewed to the, to the air of caution of red and not have it go up and down as much than taken, they want to keep it included, counted. So that, that's why they said, you know, they gave that, you know, Board of Health out or whatever to be able to say and, and evaluate when you do have the groupings to whether or not we need to take further action in a public health fashion or, you know, continue, you know, like this, again, doesn't affect sports play, like doesn't affect what would be going on within a classroom setting. So, you know, we were confident, again, very confident that then it's not going to be impacting our children in the schools.
Catherine? Catherine, you're on mute.
Sorry. You, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify something. So you, you found out on Friday that there were more cases, but the state doesn't change the ranking until Wednesday? That's when it was?
They don't post the ranking, the, the, the ranking of the change does, didn't get posted until Wednesday at 7 o'clock.
Okay, so, so there a waiting time.
That chart doesn't get posted.
So I, I'm, I'm wondering if, if we need to be able to be more as a, as the people who are making decisions about whether to leave the schools open or closed. In this particular case, we knew that it was in, you know, an enclosed environment, but if, if it's not, how do we, how do we get that information in a more practical, applicable way so that we can make a decision faster? Because a four-day lag, say it was in the school and children were affected, we have to make that decision faster than waiting the four days for the code to change on the map.
Yeah, those are definitely much quicker because anytime we have, if we have a case in the schools, we, we would know, obviously the nurse leader and I confer, we notify Scott, Board of Health, we notify Chief Cassidy, we immediately discuss the ramifications of that. If it's an isolated situation for like, for example, one child in a situation, then it's that whole cohort would be isolated and quarantined for the two weeks. Obviously, if we had a spike other than a one-case situation, that might lead to a determination right away and we would, we would act very immediately regardless of the metrics.
Okay, I guess that's what I was asking is that we don't have to wait for the map to change if, once we have the data.
If it's related to schools.
Right, yeah, no. And, and again, I think that emphasizes the importance of understanding that the map data and the color designation from DPH, which is only updated every Wednesday at 6 o'clock, is only one tool that you should be using while decision-making. But as Susan indicated, you'll, you'll know real time if you've got linkage to the school because that will be reported out and, and you'll know that long before it impacts any maps from the state.
Great, thank you. And Louise?
So when we talk about linkage to school, that goes beyond just students in school, right? Like, I mean, you have real-time transparency at the town level. So you'll know before it takes its time getting through the state's merry way and updating a, a map in color, you know, in town when there's a spike or a change in the numbers pretty quickly, right? I mean, just citizen-wide.
As soon as it's reported to the, the Department of Health by our nursing consultant, both public safety agencies are notified and that's what triggers me updating the website.
Okay.
So, so that can happen. And, and there have been days where I've prepared that post for the website three different times. Because we'll, we'll get two on, so I'll add it, then we'll get a remove and I'll change it again. And then before the close of business, I get another ad. So whatever is up there is the most current as of that date. But if I need to change it on any given date, and Dawn, thank you for bringing it to my attention. I've already posted Monday's data. But yeah, we, we've got real-time information as soon as it comes to us from the nursing consultant.
That's
Yeah. And, and what we get is we get addresses. I don't have access to male, female. I don't have age information. But my knowledge of the community allows me by looking at an address to know, single-family home, apartment building, condo, group home, long-term care facility. So that allows me to have either a higher or lower index of suspicion to be able to think, oh, these are all related or these are all just completely unrelated cases.
Thank you.
Cynthia?
Thanks. So then who is responsible for doing any of the contact tracing that goes along with those cases as they come up? Is that you, Scott? Or your department?
That's Salmon VNA. That's the Salmon VNA through our department.
We, we contract out Salmon VNA is, is one of the agencies in the Commonwealth who's doing contact tracing and surveillance for multiple communities.
And so they contact you back if there is someone else that it has been associated with the schools in any of those addresses and gives you additional information from there? Or does that go back to the?
So in our, in our conversation with your nurse leader today, Lynn Bowler, she'd indicated that she'd been in touch with the investigator who works for Salmon who's assigned to Holliston. And she has flagged Holliston and knows that if there are any school-age children, that she will be notifying not only the Board of Health, but she'll also be notifying nurse leader so that the appropriate principal and school nurse can be notified. But, but most of the contact tracing happens completely independent of the town. So there, when they contact someone and suggest you may have been in contact with someone, you should probably go get tested, or you may want to consider isolating, or do you have any symptoms? That doesn't get reported back to us. The only thing that gets reported to us is a positive case. Until the DPH publishes their weekly report, we don't know how many tests have been administered. We don't know how many came back, you know, negative. All we know is once it's a positive.
Great.
And I, I think it's important too, because there is confusion around this and Lynn is actually putting out some additional information to even our staff today. The difference between the primary contact versus a secondary contact, people are still very confused about that. And sometimes there's a rumor potentially of someone having had a positive contact or a, or was contact traced back to someone. And oftentimes it's a secondary contact that is being referred to. And we cannot disclose anything of that. I, I will, whether it's a rumor or a reality, a secondary contact is not someone that we would expect to quarantine or get a COVID-19 test and things like that. So we really do have to be safe, follow the confidentiality piece and also follow the procedures of that process. But if in the event of a school situation, certainly the principal and the nurse leader would be very closely intertwined to that contact tracing because in many cases they would, when we're talking with little children, for example, they would be able to map out the physical distancing part and who may have been in contact with the, with the potential person.
My question early, I was going to ask earlier was just if, if we're not already doing that, if we could certainly reach out and have a statement sent from either Matt and Susan or in conjunction with the, the chief to the students who are in athletics, just to reiterate what we've talked about tonight and that practices are still going to happen, et cetera. I just think that would be helpful.
Yes, that would be the next step. Matt, Matt had indicated that to me that if, as Scott has said, that we've approved that we will continue sports as we are at the moment, then he would be reaching out to MIAA tomorrow to update them. And then I would have him communicate that information out.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions for Scott or Chief at this point? Chief?
Just as a, a follow-up, I did also meet with your athletic director on Tuesday for about an hour and a half. And we, we reviewed DESI guidelines, we reviewed MIAA guidelines, we reviewed HBS policies. So I feel very comfortable going into the fall season, modified as it is, that you have all of the safeguards in place, all of the guardrails set up. And even with this change in the, the map coloration, it shouldn't impact your ability to have a, a safe and healthy fall season.
We appreciate that. So Chief, I'm going to ask you if you wouldn't mind to stay for a couple of minutes. We're actually going to talk about CARES money next and just where you're, that's part of your area. I don't want you to go too far. Scott, thank you for joining us. Please don't feel like you need to spend the rest of your night with us, but it was a pleasure to have you. Thank you for all the work you're doing. I know this is a, I'm pretty sure you didn't imagine a 2020 like this in your field. So thanks for all your efforts and, and your hard work.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I thank you.
No, thank everybody's efforts.
We, we truly added this on their plate very last minute as of this morning. I said, do you think you could come tonight and briefly talk to us? But we knew this is a very important topic and parents appreciate it and school committee and all of us appreciate that.
No, anytime.
Thank you. Thanks. Have a good night, Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
So Chief, I, I'm not going to keep you all night. I just, I'm going to make CARES the next topic. And I just love for you to stay for a couple of minutes. So I am going to turn this over to Keith and the Budget Subcommittee.
Right now, what I, what I want to be able to show you is first, the two documents for the two CARES grants we did receive, just to review if you will is put in there. So let me just, I couldn't, I just couldn't get to you. I wanted to, I just works.
You're forgiven. Don't worry about it. You're forgiven. But I do want you to just, again, like high level, just for people who are watching who may not understand or have their own thoughts about CARES. Could you just give that high level, what CARES is?
Sure. What CARES is, it's a federal grant that with regard to the schools is administered through DESI. There, there was the, the majority of our CARES money or more, majority of the aid money we received came as the CARES. And so actually the other grant is not really CARES. So this one is CARES. But this was an allocation. It was based on $225 per pupil from our foundation enrollment, which the foundation enrollment is based off last October's numbers. So what you're looking at here, $225 a student is a total allocation. You can see my screen, correct? So what you're looking at, it's got to get the, the mouse on the right screen. There we go, is this number here of $604,575. That's the amount of money that we've received through, through the coronavirus relief fund, that, which is the CARES money. We have to spend this money by the end of the calendar year. So any budgets that we have worked on had, we, we had to divide it up by money before or in calendar year 2020 and money after calendar year 2020. We're hoping that there'll be a secondary appropriation. I, I have not heard anything. I don't know if the chief has, but there's been nothing through DESI as of now. So what you're looking at here, and I've shrunk it up some and got rid of a bunch of blank lines, is the actual grant application. So I, I took a piece of that and chopped it all up. Typical DESI grant applications have a number of categories. So you'll see like over here, category one, which is administrator salaries. Category two is instructional professional staff. Now normally there'd be lines there, but since we didn't put any administrators into this or any instructional professional staff into this, and I'll explain to that to you why in one second. I didn't include any lines there just to get it. So it's at least a little bit visible to you all. The reason that we in general try to keep staff away from DESI grants is this little column over here which says MTRS. If you check that column, because the person is a member of MTRS, Mass Teachers Retirement System, like myself, Dr. Cuska, our teachers, et cetera, et cetera. If you're a member of MTRS, we then have to pay 9%. That's a, the DESI share of it into this, from the grant, I should say. So we actually lose 9% of our grant. So for example, our large entitlement grant, our $780,000 entitlement grant, we used to have a lot of payroll in there. Well, somebody who may be speaking right now took that all out so that we could get another 9% out of it. So the first, the first workplace where we started spending money or started requesting money from, through the grant process was for support staff. And, and the category here, they have a number of categories. You click here and, oh, there's, you click here and you get the categories. Non-clerical professional, secretaries or parent liaisons. So we did this as paraprofessionals. Eight staff members adds up to seven and a half FTEs. And there's a dollar amount that's attached to it. And again, this is the dollar amount before December 31st. You then next, next select one of these categories from a dropdown list. This is actually new from DESI that they create these subcategories. I'll leave it as that. It's not important to this discussion. But what we're doing, this additional paraprofessionals to help manage the manage, to help manage the split classroom environment. So again, as, as many of you know, we have the, like for example in Placentino where we have a teacher and either a unified arts teacher or a teacher and a paraprofessional sharing the classroom. That's the reason we have that. Then in the category other, I, we put 25 staff members for 263,000. That's nine permanent subs of which we haven't been able to hire all yet. Health and safety monitors, 13 of those, we haven't been able to hire all those yet. Sub nurses, we have hired all of them. So that's in that category. And then other was four custodians that right now is still on hold. We actually used our cleaning company. So I'm probably going to have to amend the grant here to move money from this category down to contracted services just because we were struggling to get the staff for these other positions and I could get the cleaning company to give me additional staff. and I could get the cleaning company to give me additional staff very easily. So I, I made that decision very quickly on that. So in, in the category of, so we have right now in the grant, 367,000 attached to payroll. And I'll go through this quicker now. From instructional, from contractual services, for instructional services, this is for software licenses. We had a number of software licenses we had to buy new for us based on hybrid learning. Again, that 34,000 is the first, you know, up through December 31st, uh, December 31st cost for that. Additional things, the HVAC analysis cost us $10,000. And then additional contracted cleaners. I have 32,000. Our number's much bigger than that. But again, this is where the money as, goes from one category to the next. This, I use this basically as the balance of the grant. Because again, we're going to be spending a lot, not a lot, more than that. And I know that going into it. But again, that's something that then the chief will talk about in a second. About CARES on the town side. Supplies and materials, instructional technology, additional classroom hardware that's purchased to facilitate hybrid learning, 65,000 in that. Essential curriculum materials for hybrid learning, 14,000 for that. Then in, in one of the, in one of the weirder categories. So in, in other costs, which other, you know, Lord knows what's in that. But the purchase of rental trailers to help facilitate a safe learning environment, we've had to both purchase and rent containers for us to store the furniture we had to take out of the room to create our safe distancing, because the one thing we didn't get with our school buildings was storage space. Then we, installation of bottle, bottle filling stations, purchases of chairs for outdoor spaces, yoga mats for indoor spaces at Placentino and tents for outdoor spaces, another 37,000. Ongoing PPE costs of 20,000 and the electrostatic sprayers, 8,000. Now a number of these things are in already. And at the total down to about 604,000. A number of these things are in already. And we've been processing them through, through units like normal. At that point, the chief kind of takes a look at it, not kind of. He takes a look at it. And for things that he can apply to for FEMA money, rather than paying it out of money that we could use for other things, he then applies some to FEMA. Mike, did you just want to explain to you what you do with that process?
Sure. So we've got a spreadsheet on the town side where we're tracking eligible expenses that are either eligible for FEMA reimbursement, which are emergency protective measures. Those that are eligible expenses under FEMA would be 75% covered of the eligible expense. But we can apply the remaining 25% to our CARES appropriation from the Division of Administration and Finance, which was the $1.3 million that we received earlier in the late spring, early summer. And then there are certain expenses which are allowable under CARES but are not FEMA eligible. And a lot of those are the technology and the planning and equipment that is very much a part of what you're doing to support remote learning.
And, and, and so, you know, the approach from this is we want to make sure that we're working closely, Mike and I work closely on this, but working closely with the town side. Because the town's 1.3 million also has that same December, before December 31st date on it. So again, it's trying to maximize the value we get from those resources. Now we're balancing that obviously with regards to what happens if there isn't a subsequent award. And if they, instead of getting a subsequent award, they let us use the current year funds into next year. And so it's, it's a little bit of a, again, a balancing act because we can't wait too long on spending the money. But on the other hand, you know, we also want to make sure that we're not having to scramble for resources in January. So there's still a lot of things to happen with this. And this is, this is again, one piece of it. The other piece of the grant is, it was a grant that's known as the ESER grant, which is, this one's a much shorter grant. So I didn't even bother shopping this into a smaller fund. This is a $54,000 grant. We received this, it was based on the Title I allocation for the monies that, that we received. We received about 80%, not about, we received 80% of our Title I allocation. In this ESER grant, this is more of a true DESI grant or a true state grant. And so for this, what we did is we put, let me just slide over a little so you can see here. So for instructional services, we put $48,000 into the second half of the year's technology and software purchases. So we at least now have a mechanism to pay for the second half of the year. And this grant, as it turns out, goes for the entire fiscal year. So we can, this can be spent after December 31st. And then additional costs for our, for sanitizing either products or for cleaners or whatever. It's kind of a generic $6,400 a year. So again, this one totals up to, this one totals up to the $54,000. So when you look at these, that's basically the funding sources we currently have available between the ESER, which we're going to, which we're reserving for next calendar year, but this fiscal year. The, the, our, our piece of CARES, which is the 600, you know, 600,000. And then occasionally we may be bleeding into the town side on, on theirs. We have, we have, the, the select board is, is aware of this going on. Mike, again, is liaison, liaising, liaisoning between the two. And so that's kind of where we stand. We have a budget that we, that we've developed initially. As you've heard me say, I'm going to actually close this. So we'll stop looking at that. We had a budget that we started with initially that at this stage, we are so out of reasonableness with, with the, with the staff we've had to hire or couldn't hire, wanted to hire, with some then other costs we hadn't expected. I, at this point, that budget is just, I, we know that right now that our expenses are still slated to be more than the 600,000. That being said, which categories they're falling in at this stage, it's a little bit loosey goosey as we need to adapt and adjust a little on the fly. We have to maintain that flexibility at this point. So, and luckily DESI is very flexible when it comes to amending grants. I'm doing grants with them for 20 years. So, you know, for, for us to go through and say, I need to spend, you know, 50,000 more in this category than that category, they go, okay. You know, so I, I think that's about it. I don't know if there's anything else. Ann Louise, where'd she go? I lost her. Up there you are. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add here.
Um, no, I just, I just want to make sure everyone understands because that sounded a little cowboy-like, loosey goosey. I, I don't think it's, I, I think you probably have a pretty good handle on this and it's a matter of sort of codifying it in the spreadsheet and just adding up the numbers, but I know it's not. That's not crazy for everyone else. But having said that, we probably soon should take stock, you know, in a very specific way. And, and I just want to make sure that we're also accounting for any insurance costs or other tertiary benefits, et cetera, costs that we, we need to be tracking as we go through this.
Well, I saw you just jumping, I didn't actually mention that. That's a great point there, Ann Louise. The, the, I know there's been discussions with regards to what would happen, again, as part of the finance team, the town. There's discussions on what would happen if we had to close down and then lay off a number of staff members. The fact is, is that through at least our piece of CARES, unemployment costs are, is a CARES eligible event. So either we're going to pay the staff or we'd pay, or we could pay the unemployment cost. So kind, I don't say either way, but that cost would be covered. Things like benefits, is CARES eligible, at least on our side? I don't know about yours, Mike. I think it is though. I think? No? I wasn't a happy face.
It was like a maybe.
It, it depends on whose guidance you're looking at. Treasury put out one and A&amp;F put out something else and they don't always jive.
Okay. Well, it is, it is in ours. So again, it, it creates an opportunity where as long as we keep the, the good relationships that we have with, with, with the town side of government, which I don't expect to change, that I think that this, I, I think everything can work out here. So.
So I just wanted to say one other thing, just in fairness to Keith. He, he really pulled a lot of this together today for this meeting tonight. The Budget Subcommittee has not been able to meet for several weeks now. In part, we, we did that because we put things aside because the administration was so deeply entrenched in trying to reopen schools. And frankly, a lot of the costs have been changing because of the staff changes over the last several weeks. So we're going to set up a meeting over the next week or so. There is some capital issues I wanted to just go through. And then we'll come back at our next school committee meeting. I can't remember when that is right now.
The 15th.
The 15th. Okay, that, that should be fine. So no one was holding back. We just didn't have this detail to give to you. Because I know Cynthia, you've been asking, we just didn't have it.
And one of the things I brought up to Keith today that's been growing and making me a little bit anxious is that these additional needs, you know, related to hiring, related to leaves of absence, FF-CRA, all these different things that are on our plates because of COVID now have created an enormous amount of work from an HR perspective. And the paperwork piece of that, I'm hoping that we could potentially apply some of the CARES money to, even if it's temporary. I think long-term, we do need some more, certainly some more HR staff. But even if we could temporarily hire someone to try to fill some of those gaps, I can certainly oversee them because I have all that personnel background. But just being, it, it's just the, I worry about things falling through the cracks if we don't have someone tracking these things. It can't be piecemealed out with so many expectations from the state level and so forth.
All right. Well, that's something we can discuss. So maybe we'll compare calendars after the meeting and figure out how soon we can have a subcommittee meeting and make a recommendation to support you on that.
We did have that as one of our items for this past year, just so you know, Susan. It was, it's been on our radar for quite some time.
Yes, and I think it's certainly a necessary thing long-term. But right now, it's just an additional thing that is added on with all of these changing, ever-changing things that we've talked about for weeks now.
Are there any other questions, clarifications needed for CARES? No, we're good. Chief, I'm happy to say I can say have a good night before nine o'clock. You are welcome to stay with us, but I, I appreciate all that you're doing and it is late.
I, I was watching the front half of the meeting on, on the HCAT feed. So I can, I can fade into the background now.
Yeah. No, it was great to see you and we really appreciate all that you're doing. So thank you and thanks for spending the time with us. It's, it's, you know, you helped the message and we really appreciate that.
And thank you for your responsiveness too, Chief. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's what I'm here for.
All right. Good to see you. All right. And we can move right into, is there a leave of absence that we need to take a vote on?
Yes, similar to the leaves I brought back to in previous meetings, we have one request for a leave of absence under Article 17 for a one-year unpaid leave of absence for a staff member.
Sorry. Is there, does anyone have any questions, first of all? I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Is there a motion to approve a one-year leave of absence unpaid for a staff member?
So moved by Cynthia.
I heard Ann Louise first. I'll call her. So moved by Ann Louise, seconded by Cynthia. Roll call vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Great. So we do have, Lisa shared a newsletter draft with us.
Yeah, I'm sorry it was so late, you guys, but it's super short. I could even just read it out loud and we could go through it.
I definitely.
Do you guys want me to read it out loud?
Yeah.
Okay. Super short. Here we go. Help us keep the schools open. We made it through the first week. Congratulations to the administrators, teachers and staff who worked hard to make this happen. Now we just have to try to stay open. This is a friendly reminder and maybe a plea that we really are all in this together. By sending our children to school, we are potentially increasing our household exposure to the coronavirus. We urge you to mitigate risk in any other way that you can in order to increase the likelihood that Holliston Public Schools will be able to remain open. As we watch the number of college cases rise, and I put a link to an article on that, we want to highlight the importance of curtailing unnecessary contact outside your immediate family. While it's no fun to limit socializing, it is an important tool in mitigating, in mitigating spread. When you have to be around other people, please remember to be diligent about wearing masks, washing your hands, not touching your face, and please socialize outside whenever possible. The safer at-home advisory from the State Department of Public Health, and again, there's a link to that, which is still in place, calls on parents to quote, "limit playdates for children." Thank you in advance for helping to keep Holliston safe. So I don't want to come across as preachy, but I do just want, I think it's important to put out the reminder. So that's why I suggested this. Ann Louise?
Really good. I have one teeny tiny knit suggestion. You have mitigating twice, like a sentence apart.
Oh, I hate that. Okay.
I knew you would. That's why it's like, maybe reducing. One of them's reducing and then you can.
Where, I don't see it though.
I heard it. There was a mitigating.
Okay. It's two sentences apart, but yeah, no, you're right. I hate that.
Um, what was the part where you said in the second paragraph, "We urge you to mitigate risk in any other way that you can"? What did?
Oh.
What did you mean by that? In any other way?
Well, I just, by limiting, by limiting everything that's optional, you know? Like all making choices about.
Yeah. Why don't you just say that then? Be more specific.
Well, I, because it covers lots of things, right? It could be more hand washing even, like mitigating risks is broad.
Okay. Well, I think we do, I do get more specific in the next paragraph. I think. Yeah, I'll just say reduce on the first. We urge you to reduce risk in any other way that you can in order to increase the likelihood that Holliston Public Schools will be able to remain open.
Per usual, really good.
Okay. Does anybody, can I read the second part? This was just the second part I just added. Sorry. This was something that Stacy asked me to do and I just scrambled to do it really quickly, but it's really straightforward. Okay. So it's even shorter. I'm going to do it really quick. Rent and mortgage relief available. We wanted to share with the community a program available through Holliston Youth and Family Services. Because of financial struggles precipitated by the pandemic, help is available via the CARES Act to cover up to three months rental or mortgage assistance with certain caps. Guidelines on the application are, are available on the department website and I also linked to it. And it's very straightforward. If you go to the department website, it outlines it all in much greater detail. I just, Jackie had asked us to include that and I wanted to do that.
Yep. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we want to also add a link to what a face, what the appropriate face masks are supposed to be or anything else?
Susan, I think you just sent that out with one of your communications, didn't you?
I think I did. I think I've been sending things out frequently. I keep trying to embed a lot of these in there. And I, I, yes, I, I keep trying to repeat these things. We sent out a communication that was a DESI recommendation that had a reminder about symptom, you know, if they have symptoms and talks about the face covering again. So I, I, I think all of these are helpful. I also don't want to oversaturate people and, and get them.
That's the thing is I, you know? I really want to keep our newsletters short, particularly for the next couple of months because people are getting so many emails from the schools. And I feel like I don't want to say anything unless we feel like it's really important and can add to the conversation. But these are two things I do, I personally feel like are really important to add. I mean, I think, you know, we need to, I think it's part of our leadership role to nudge people to remember that, you know, we really do all have a responsibility to each other to keep the schools open. It really is on us. Like I think, I just feel like that's an important thing for us to say. And then the other thing, you know, I think is hugely important for people who need it. And it's also just, you know, really short and easy and a nice way for us to be a good partner to another town department. So, you know, I really want to keep these as short as possible so there's some chance people will read them.
Any other questions or suggestions? Is there a motion to approve the newsletter as presented this evening?
So moved by Ann Louise.
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Ann Louise, seconded by Andy. Roll call vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Raf, Mr. Raffey. Mr. Raffey, yes. We don't need his opinion right now. Mrs. Raffey, yes. Okay. So, that is all for this evening. I think we're all at the end of a long week. Our next meeting is October 15th, I believe. Let me just look at the calendar real quick. So, on the agenda for that evening, we'll have another school update, reopening update, if you will. We might have a budget recommendation, Budget Subcommittee.
We're not submitting an incremental capital request this fall. So, there won't be that, but I do want to go through with the Budget Subcommittee in a little bit more detail the CARES numbers and get a kind of a more precise point in time estimate of where we are, as Keith was saying, on staffing. So, hopefully, we'll have that.
Okay. Dawn?
I just wanted to make sure, are we still on track to open up the high school for in-person learning on Tuesday?
Yes, I'll just quickly give you a brief update on all of that. The principals and I obviously have been conferring regularly. And we still are not fully staffed, as we've talked about before. I, my estimate and their estimates is we're about 50% of the way with those new positions. And as I keep telling you, sometimes we keep, we get someone hired and then they, at the last minute, have not taken the job. So, we still have a little bit of a struggle with that. I did ask Dan McLeod and Donna Barry have helped us certainly with Indeed. We got our postings on Indeed and that was a recommendation from Kelly Camp. That has been very helpful. I've seen a lot of applications for paraprofessionals come in through that modality. And our assistant principals, in most cases, are doing the interviews for those. We've been able to hire some of those positions. And then I've been, I recently partnered, and I'll tell you more about this another night, with Mass Partnership for Diversity in Education in the hope of trying to hire some more diverse candidates for the district. And I had worked with them when I was in Waymouth and reached out to them recently. So, they have a website that I'm working on updating all of our information, sending it to them. But they also have a place to post our jobs. So, our school spring link will be on MPDE. And as soon as I get our information on their site, I will make sure to, oh, my battery's running low. That's a good sign that I have to stop talking. So, I will make sure to get the links to our website on both ends. It's a, it's a great partnership and it ties into the work we're going to be doing with Diverse Holliston as well. Oh, so sorry, the 9 to 12. And even though we have these gaps still, we are still on track. Tomorrow, we will have all of our K to 8 back. We have our full cohort B in tomorrow for 4 to 8. And 9 to 12 is on track for Tuesday and we don't foresee any concerns with that. Obviously, we'll still have all hands on deck and do the best we can in the meantime.
Okay. Just another follow-up, too. Again, I wanted to thank the volunteers and the people who have, have reached out and tried to get people to apply for these positions. Could you update us on volunteers? Do we have an idea of how many people step forth from the community to be part of the solution?
Yes, I think we had about 14 or 15 people that offered to volunteer. We haven't been able to get all of those into the buildings for various reasons, waiting for paperwork and things. But we have had some few that have really helped. I know one or two at the middle school and I think a couple at Placentino that have been very helpful. We've had a parent who is riding the bus with our students as a bus monitor, even though his children are not on the bus. So, that's really nice to see that volunteers, volunteerism spirit take part in the community. And everybody has been really stepping up. Parents have been wonderful. Staff have been so supportive. It's really been so awesome, not only to, for me to physically be able to greet the children. We've been putting them in cars, doing lunch duties as needed. It's been, although exhausting, it's been a lot of fun to see the kids come back and see the parents so eager to support us with the work that we need to do.
I guess the only other thing I would say, I'm, we don't yet have everybody back in person. Things, we're still working the kinks out. We're still finding out additional information. Metrics are still changing. I'm glad that it looks like we're going to end this meeting, you know, before 9:30. So, they haven't been as long as we've gone in the last few months. But are we interested in having another meeting before three weeks? Are we going to let three weeks pass? Because we have, we had talked about that it was a flexible schedule. Do we feel a need to meet again before three weeks? Or are we just going to wait for an issue to pop up and then schedule a meeting?
Well, I do know that we have impact bargaining meetings next week as well. So, I wonder if we should sort of wait to see our next steps there? And then maybe we could reach out if that seems necessary?
I think that's a good idea, actually, because if there's anything to talk about, it might come out of that.
What do you, what do you think about this? We put out a number of surveys in April and May and June to the community about remote learning. What was working, what wasn't working, input, feedback. Do we have any kind of plan in place or could we develop one to put out a survey about hybrid learning? And we still have a percentage of our students, and maybe it's even as much as 20% who are engaged in solely remote learning in the district. So, it might be helpful and maybe it won't happen in the next two or three weeks. But looking forward to continue to survey parents, families about what's working, what's not working and getting that input, both on hybrid and remote.
Yes, I think we had talked about doing one in October. So, I will work on getting that started and draft it with the principals. And I do think that feedback would be really helpful to have.
Thank you.
Catherine?
I was just wondering, I know we're all hearing a lot of feedback from, from kids and from teachers and from parents. And when we were first rolling this all out, we all had a Google Doc where we were keeping track of all of the questions. Can we do something like that again so that we are all, you know, sort of having it at the top of our minds the way that things are going, but also so we don't forget things that, you know, that there's this kind of common place to put things? Because I do think that also, we're going to need to evaluate the, the remote learning and the in-person learning, but there's so much more that is coming up that's not just about the modalities. So, if we have, if we had a place where we could all write all of the concerns and topics that we're hearing, we have less of a chance of letting something slip by.
I'll add a tab to that doc. So, I'll, you know, I'll list it as remote learning. Just that way, it's sort of, we know it's the, it changed in the point in time that it's like, you know, September on. I'll add a, I'll add a tab to that.
Can you reshare that doc?
Yep.
I'm not sure where I filed that doc.
And Susan, were you going to say something? I interrupted you again. I'm sorry.
I was just trying to explain why I jumped out of the screen because my computer is at 8%. Even though it was fully charged before this meeting. So, this computer certainly has a very short time period.
All right. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Ann-Louise.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Ann-Louise. All in favor? Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. It is 9:10 PM. We are now adjourned. And wishing all who celebrate this weekend a happy holiday. Is it in the middle of the week? Is it Monday? Monday.
Monday.
Wishing you all a happy holiday. So, good night, all. See you soon.
Good night, Keith. Good night, Susan.
Bye.